I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Board of Trustees Agenda Work Session, February 22, 2022. The time is 6:06 PM. We're all present here, so I'd like to call everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So we will begin our meeting with the board presentation because this is the work session. We do not have public comment this evening. Now, we have our financial statements for the fiscal end, May 31, 2021, presented by PFK O'Connor Davies LLP. So either Shirley, and I can turn this over to you, or to our auditors.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we have finished the audit process. The auditors, our new audit firm, PFK O'Connor Davies, will be the partner Jeff DiBoli, and the audit manager Jennifer Clark will be presenting the financials and discussing them a bit. We are still waiting on the final issue of the Justice Court, as there was a letter that needed to be, you know, some, so we have one, one, one item that has to be tidied up for Justice Court that should be issued in the next meeting. So I would like to see if Kat can, can you please bring Mr. Jeff DiBoli and Jen Clark into Zoom?
They are on their way over, as you spoke. Okay. And number two. There we are. Hi, Jennifer. If you could put on your camera and your sound. I'll send you an unmute. Will that help?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jeff DiBoli. I'm the lead partner for PKF O'Connor Davies, the village's auditors. And I'd like to state for the record that I've seen Councilor Gray's chicken dance, and it's no prettier and
Oh, my gosh.
than it is on video. As, as
Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate that.
No problem. I also introduced previously my manager Jennifer Clark, who has saved my professional life on a couple of occasions. So if it's okay, will I be able to share my screen?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you need, okay, good.
Okay, so everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let me just get my camera back here. Okay, so this is the, I'm going to go kind of quickly through this, and you can stop me as I, as I get too fast, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure you have a pretty busy agenda today. So I'll, I'm going to just hit some highlights. So here's just a quick agenda for, from my presentation, audit status, which is done, of course. We're going to go through some of our responsibilities as your auditors, some of your responsibilities as management and those charged with governments. We'll go through quickly some audit scope and approach, some financial statement highlights, and some communications. Significant audit areas addressed. The work is done. We completed the work. We met with the Audit Committee on two separate occasions on February 8th and February 18th, and they have reviewed the statements as you have and have given their, their clearance on issuance. So we're, we're ready to go on the issuance. The, the opinion is unmodified as relates to most of the opining units. There is one qualified opinion on the Justice Court, which we'll get into in a little bit. This is just some of our responsibilities. We're planning and performing the audit in accordance with the professional standards to make sure that the financial statements that we're expressing opinion on are in accordance with US government gap. We consider internal control for purposes of our testing, but we do not express an opinion on the internal control. We accumulate misstatements that we identify in the audit, and we conduct the audit with, with professional skepticism, and we always take a fresh look. And we evaluate the presentation of the financial information. These, this, some communications that are required to have. We have significant deficiencies which are displayed in this presentation, and I'm happy to report there is no fraud or illegal acts that we came across. And we also look at the process that management uses to formulate sensitive estimates that are included in the financial statements. Some of your responsibilities as management, make sure the accounting policies are appropriate. Make sure that the presentation of the financial statements is US government gap, maintaining and establishing effective internal control over financial reporting, making sure that the village is in compliance with laws, regulations, provisions of contracts and grant agreements, and making sure that all financial records are really related to the audit are presented to us, which they are. Those charged with governments communicating with us as auditors and overseeing the financial process. And of course, everybody's responsibility is to set the proper tone at the top and maintain and encourage honesty and ethical standards, and designing and implementing policies and internal controls to prevent and detect fraud. This is just some of our audit scope and approach. We look at significant areas, cash, revenue receivables, accounts payable, expenditures, and other liabilities, fund balance, payroll, because of the size, equity and, and finance statement reconciliations. And the, we also perform a test under gas or government auditing standards to make sure that you're in compliance with all laws and, and regulations as it relates to financial statements. This year, there was an implementation of a new GASB, GASB Statement 84, which had to do with, with trust and agency and moving some liabilities and cash that was previously entrusted agency to the operating funds, while maintaining some of them still in custodial fund. You'll see in our opinion that there is an emphasis, a matter paragraph pointing out that this new standard was adopted by the village this year. It's a couple of financial statement highlights. Government-wide financial statements, which we know are full accrual statements, increase in net position by $1.1 million. Overall, net position was a deficit of $43.6 million in the governmental activities. And the investment in capital assets of $27.8 million, restricted net position, which are predominantly your GML reserves of 8.4, and an overall unrestricted net deficit of just under $80 million. You can stop me anytime if anybody has any questions. So this is the governmental funds balance sheet. So this is on the modified accrual current financial resource basis. General Fund had an increase in fund balance of $1.2 million or 7%. Capital Projects, which we know are multi-year funds, increased by $157, 4.3 million. And the Special Revenue Fund increased by 136% or $466,000. So across all funds in the village, there was roughly about a $6 million increase or 29% increase in fund balances. On the right-hand side is the fund balance by type. Well, fund balances are broken down into various categories. Non-spendable, which are prepaid items. Restrictions, as I said, was 8.4, which were general municipal or reserves. Assigned fund balance, which is fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund, and encumbrances in the General Fund, 7.7. And unassigned or free fund balance of $9.8 million. That's all in the, in the General Fund. Some budgetary highlights, revenues were better than budget by 3.6 million, and expenditures were better than budget by $1.5 million. So across the revenues and expenditures for the General Fund, there was about a $5.1 million better than budget, actual versus the budget. Unassigned fund balance, as I said, was $9.8 million in the General Fund. We generally, what we do is we calculate that as a percentage of the ensuing year's operating expenses for 2022, and it represents about 30.4%. So we consider that not as, not part of the, the audit, but just an offline comment to you is that is a pretty healthy level of fund balance. Less than 10% would be something that you should be concerned about. And, you know, anywhere from 20 to 30% represents roughly a quarter of the year's expenses that are in the bank, in the, in the fund balance bank, if you will, to pay the next year's expenses without receiving a dime more in revenue.
Jeff, can I interrupt for a second?
Certainly.
I don't know how many school districts you represent, but can you explain the difference between the restrictions on a school district versus a village with respect to the reserves? Because I know a lot of people read in the paper that a lot of school districts are in violation of the amount they're allowed to have in their reserves.
Yes. Yeah. So, so school districts are, are subject to some different rules. As Mr. Gray is saying, school districts, they're, they have a, a cap on unrestricted fund balance of 4%. They can't have more than 4% in fund balance. So what they're then required to do was to create a budget that operates more narrowly than a village does. And what they generally do is they establish reserves. And, you know, sometimes you'll see the state controller criticizing school district for building up too much money in their reserves. And in the village, you, you can accumulate as much fund balance as, as the village board requires necessary for the future projects and, and transfers and other operating expenses, or rainy day funds in reserves.
Thank, thank you for explaining that, that difference legally, you know, between school districts and villages. Thank you, Mr. DiBoli. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. You're welcome. There's some, some new GASBs on the horizon. If, if I go through these in detail, you probably won't invite me back. So I'll just tell you that what, what the biggest one that's coming down, down the pike is GASB 87, which has to do with leases and conduit debt, which has to do with more IDAs. Then, of course, there's always an omnibus catch-all in 92. Everybody knows GASB 93 is, is a replacement of LIBOR. And then there's some stuff coming down the pike further down with public and private and public and public partnerships. And we'll see more of that as these ARPA funds roll out and the ability to share these, these ARPA funds with public and private partnerships. And then there's another one coming down regarding subscription-based technology. So one of the things that are required to do is, is to, is to communicate with you our responsibilities under professional standards. And we do that generally through the engagement letter. That engagement was received by us on July 27, 2021. And then there's just a couple more things regarding qualitative aspects of accounting practices broken into various categories. One is accounting policies. And we're happy to say that no matters have come to our attention that require us to inform you about the effects of accounting policies in controversial or emergent areas where there's a lack of authoritative guidance. Another area is significant and unusual transactions. And we're also here to report that there are no matters that came to our attention that are unusual transactions. Accounting estimates and management's judgments, this, these are a big part of the financial statements. Largely, the government-wide financial statements, they include some very large estimates for items like depreciation, compensated absences, the net pension liability on the GASB 68 that was pushed down to the local governments, LoSAP, and the big, the big elephant on the, the government-wide statements is the OPEB liability. So management believes that these estimates used and assumptions made are adequate based on the information available. We've evaluated those and we agree. Financial statement disclosures. What, what can I say about this? Financial statement disclosures are, are complicated, but they are presented in the clear and consistent manner in your financial statements. And I'm also happy to report that there were no significant difficulties in dealing with management during our audit. There were no disagreements with management during our audit. We received the representation from management required under the standards on February 8th to issue the financial statements. And another thing that must be considered is that that if, if we come across the, the knowledge that, that the client has consulted with other accountants regarding opinion shopping on matters, we're required not to take the engagement, and we're happy that there were no such consultations. And there were no matters discussed or responses there to that were conditioned to our attention as auditors. We, as required under the standards, we affirm that we're independent as it relates to the village. And then there's a couple of disclosures in there related to correcting and uncorrecting misstatements. There are no financial statement items that are, remain uncorrected. And there are no material misstatements identified during our audit that individually or in the aggregate to the financial statements would make us alter our opinion. So we have a couple of internal control matters we'd like to go over. Can I turn it over to you, Jen, to take care of these?
Sure. So the first internal control matter that we're required to bring to your attention is there was a discrepancy in some of the accounting records for the bail account for the Justice Court. We weren't aware of any indication that there was any fraud or anything like that, just that the accounting records don't agree to the bank reconciliation. And since they're not in agreement and we can't identify the differences, we can't be certain which are the more accurate amounts. And because it's in a very small fund, the custodial fund, the amount was material to the financial statements. The rest are not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, just areas where we thought there could be some improvements. And the first is cybersecurity awareness training. During the audit, we became aware that the village did not have a cybersecurity employee awareness training program, and we recommended that one be implemented. And to my knowledge, that's already been put in place. So that should be removed on next year's audit. There was a cybersecurity assessment we were recommended, which is that the village contract with an IT specialist to conduct a comprehensive cyber risk assessment to ensure that the village is secure. And I believe that's also been contracted at this point. We noted a lack of segregation of duties between collection, deposit, and recording of cash receipts. In smaller entities, sometimes it's difficult to segregate all of those duties completely, but the village has already shifted some responsibilities to put those, that segregation of duties in place. We also noted that the village should not have a policy or procedure in place to require a second approval of all journal entries. And again, we believe that's already in progress. We also became aware that certain resident beach permits, which are free of charge for village residents, were being issued to individuals who did not qualify, free of charge. And that results in a potential of lost revenue for the village. And so we recommended that the village improve procedures surrounding the resident beach permit process to ensure that that doesn't happen on a go-forward basis. And again, I believe the village is already in the process of implementing a new software, which would help to better track those permits. And the last item was that we noted that there's a lot of cash that's collected at the beach. And we just recommended that the village attempts to reduce the amount of cash that's collected possibly by accepting credit cards or putting other procedures in place to minimize cash, as obviously cash is the highest risk payment for transactions, since it can easily be misappropriated.
Okay, so let me, let me also state, thanks, Jen. Let me also state that when we brought these attention, to the attention of management, these comments, it, it was, it was like they, they kind of were already on top of it. So that's, as auditors, we're very encouraged that, that the, the finance department is, is very proactive on these items. And they were either afoot or, or about to be. So we were encouraged by that.
I, I did actually send to the board the corrective measures that we've already put in place in a memo to, to the auditors in response to some of the findings. What we're, we're going to be talking about is implementing some procedures where there is daily reports. The village clerk will now be given a, a report at the end of the, all the daily activity with the list of non-resident resident permits and to, to, you know, spot audit and approve. We've also changed up the, the flow of information, the flow of transaction for the receipt of cash, and just segregated it that now the deposit and the recording of the receipts are done by the deputy treasurer and the accountant rather than just by the deputy treasurer. And then we've also implemented a bank reconciliation process where I sign off on the bank reconciliations and review them, which was in place for, for quite a while. We're now adding that to the Justice Court. We've hired a, an outside accountant a couple of meetings ago, Richard Buxton, who is working on looking at the reconciliations at the Justice Court. And we believe what happened was that the software is not being updated with the bank reconciliation items. So many times during a monthly bank reconciliation, you'll find checks will return, and those will be listed on the bank reconciliation, but they weren't actually recorded in the tax, in, in the accounting software, the, the court software that they use, which is a state program. So we went back, Julie and I did a deep dive and went all the way back. We found out that there was discrepancies that reported back to 2012 in the amount of $7,000. And we think this has just grown through the years because these transactions and adjustments that were found during the bank reconciliation process were never recorded in the software. So we're getting software, we're, we're getting the bank reconciliations, you know, caught up. All those changes are identified. They're now sent to the Justice Court clerks on a monthly basis, and the accountant is ensuring that they are posted before he proceeds with the next monthly bank reconciliation, so we can avoid these problems in the future. The other issue we have is cash at the bank, at the beach. There's a lot of, a lot of our part-time young folks that are working at the beach are collecting cash. I know a lot of the other municipalities have gone cashless with handheld credit card machines. And it's probably the direction we'll move in, but we'll have a discussion with the board when we have the resolution setting forth the policy for beach collections this coming year.
Yeah, let me, thank you. Let me, let me also state that we took a very close look at the, going back to the Justice Court, we looked very closely at cash receipts and cash dispersions that happened during this, this fiscal year, and we feel comfortable about those. So as Mrs. Cagle Betts said, this is an era that goes back years and years. It could be an administrative error. We, we don't feel like, you know, there's any cash missing or anything like that. But, you know, we just think it's sloppy record-keeping on the updating the software.
And, and this goes back to 2012?
2012. There was a $7,000 discrepancy in 2012. In the beginning of 2021, it was at $11,000. So it's been growing through the years. And apparently, there were never checks and balances where the bank reconciliations were performed by the outside accountant at the time. And those changes were never recorded in, in the, in the software to make sure that the book balance and the bank balance, you know, were reconciled.
Yes. So let me also say that, you know, that there is a modified opinion or qualified opinion on the, on the Justice Court as it relates to the financial statements. And it, and it, you know, it, it seems like, you know, a pretty serious thing. And, and it's nothing to be, you know, fluffed off. I'm just saying that the discrepancy because of the opining unit, which is the custodial fund, which represents the bail in the Justice Court's accounts, because that is a separate opining unit, the materiality that we need to measure errors by are very low. And, and that's why we have modified opinion as it relates to the custodial.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to take this time. Really appreciate your hard work. I know you've been, been here quite a bit, and we're very happy with the, the audit that we have in front of us. There's a lot of good news here, and there's also some areas for improvement, which, as you mentioned, we're already taking. I have some comments that I'll make at the end, but I just wanted to open this up to any comments or questions from any of the board members.
Yeah, I, I, I have one, one quick question, if I may. The 27 million that, in good mention, is, is that a, a complete, is it, and, and is that buildings, land altogether? Is that just, is there breakdown on that, the assets? Is it, is it land and?
27 million? I'm, I'm sorry. Right, right, right. Yeah, that, 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 there's a breakout in the notes of the financial statement. It is land, it is buildings, it is improvements. It is everything that the town has capitalized over the years.
Does that include like vehicles, fire trucks, or whatever?
Yes.
Capital assets.
Okay.
There is a note in, 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 in the section, in the back section of the financials trustee. There's a, there's a note section that actually gives you the breakdown and the depreciation on all those assets.
Thank you for that.
It's on page 31.
Thanks. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Trustee McLaughlin. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? One quick thing, I don't want to take too much time on this that I was particularly interested in. You had mentioned that there are some changes in the GASB 91 for the conduit debt obligations. Could you maybe quickly, not too long, talk about, about what that means for the village?
It doesn't mean anything for the village. There's a good chance it won't even affect the village. It, it more has to do with IDAs, LBCs, and EDCs, where they have conduit debt on their balance sheet. You do not have conduit debt on your balance sheet.
Yeah, so one, we had an issue a bit, a while ago where there was some interest in, in using the Suffolk County IDA bonds for potentially to finance sewer infrastructure. We, we, we may not go in that direction, but in case we do, will that impact anything as far as disclosures go, or just curious what that?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe that, that debt is going to be on your balance sheet.
No, it wouldn't be.
So I, I mean, Mayor, could you take a, take a closer look at that when you have some particulars on that?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much again. I appreciate it. Again, wanted to thank you for your time, and I know you spent a lot of time looking at our, at our numbers. Again, some, some good news. You know, $1.056 million of, of cash surplus from our last budget. Though again, you know, as usual, we have to start looking at some of the OPEB and other type of long-term liabilities. And, you know, as the public knows, we just resolved that we're going to be doing a study in the Justice Court. Makes a lot more sense now that we're, you know, seeing some of those discrepancies in the bail accounts from the, the Justice Court. So I think that makes that, that study even more, more important at this time. So appreciate, appreciate that as well. So again, and Shirley, I wanted to thank you for helping implement some of the policies and procedures as far as those internal controls go. So it's good to see that we're taking steps in a positive direction to help, you know, make some positive changes to some of the issues that we've had in the past. So again, wanted to thank you and your team for your time, and I guess we can keep on, on moving here in our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, village trustees. And of course, thank you to Mrs. Cagle Betts and Ms. Crudop for their assistance during the audit. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, yes.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Jen.
And thank you, Julie.
Mr. DiBoli, thank you.
This is the volley. Thank you for everything.
All right. Again, Charlene, Julie, good, great job. Thank you very much for your hard work on this. I know it was a heavy lift. That being said, no communications to the board, but there's one discussion item. That is the solar trash can and EV charging station update presented by our deputy mayor, trustee Arista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, good news today. We passed all the tests that PSEG put us through as far as the EV charging stations are concerned. I was, I got a little excited when I went by and I saw the hoses hooked up and I thought we were on, but we're just about there. So I know Ken is working on the signage with Gary and we're just waiting for the last and the final hookup for PSEG, which should take place in a couple of weeks, but you know, we're, we're just about there, which is, which is great news. So once you see the signs up and that's when it'll be ready to go. The other thing is the EV, I'm sorry, the solar trash cans, the big bellies. We, Gary and I met the other day with Kevin, the representative from the company. And we walked through Main Street and we went through where these, the solar power bellies are going to be placed. And so we're just finalizing that. And, but in the meantime, while we're doing that, because of, as with everything else that's being backdoored these days, it's not going to take six weeks. It's going to be longer than six weeks to get the bellies in. But we gave them the okay to move ahead with the ordering while we get that map finalized. So our first area is going to be both sides of Main Street. And then after that, after the first implementation, the second phase will go through later on. That would be down Job's Lane. So that's what we're working on and we should see that before May 11th for sure. So thank you.
Trustee Arista, thank you very much. So we'll keep our, our meeting moving. We now have a public hearing, so I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding local law three dash two thousand twenty-two. The proposal to amend one nineteen dash two fees to update the building department fees. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Ken, I'll, I'll let you take it from here. I have a few questions and then we could open this up to any public comment.
Hey Mayor, there's no hands up, only two people in the audience.
All right. Thank you, Ken.
Okay. So, so this is a, a request by the, the mayor and the board of trustees to increase certain fees that are collected by the building department. The building department obviously has a lot of expenses related to it. They have to do inspections. They have to review plans. They have to send building inspectors out to sites during various portions of the process to, for building so that they can eventually issue COs. And those costs are very expensive. We have personnel issues and I believe there was a review by the building department that their expenses were not being fully covered by the fee that were being implemented to the applicant. So I, I, I think this is an issue of simply looking to capture the expenses for building applications. And that's where we are. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments or issues on that?
Few, a few questions, but just wanted to open this up to members of the board. If they have any questions or comments, if not, we can keep on moving. I know we already had, this is the second series of our public hearing as we adjourned it at our last meeting. Okay.
I'm good with it.
Ken, the only question I had is for, we have some of the new buildings or additions and just wanted to confirm, I'm looking at the language here and it said for an estimated construction cost not exceeding estimated cost of 100,000, 1.25% of the estimated cost of construction materials, not less than $250, et cetera, et cetera. Just want to make, make sure that the language is consistent with the kind of a sliding scale.
My understanding is that this has been vetted through the building department and yes, it is a sliding scale so that the, the smaller projects don't feel the harm, so to speak. The, the smaller projects will require less administration by the village and the village building department. So that, that's the reasoning and rationale behind the lower percentage fee for them. And then obviously larger projects are going to require more review, more investigation, more responses and to, to, to the larger projects. So I think, I think that, I think the sliding scale that's been introduced is consistent with the amount of time and effort that village trust, village personnel will require to look at these projects. So to make sure that they're in compliance with local and state building codes.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Ken. And again, just wanted to reiterate that this was done in collaboration and discussion with our senior building inspector. And also again, as our attorney, Ken Gray said, you know, reflective of the increase of costs that will incur just in the regular data, the operations of our building department as well as, you know, the constant need for inspections. And so I think this would be a good, a good local lot of pass. And then it was also done by looking at other municipalities. We looked at the village of Sagaponic. We looked at the village of Belleport. We really looked across a number of villages across Suffolk County. And it seems to be relatively consistent with that. And Ms. Bill Manger, the chair of a steering committee mentioned that this hasn't been done in over a decade and a half or so. So it was certainly time. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to close the, the public hearing. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Trustee McLaughlin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we can keep on moving. Charlene, I'll defer this to you as we move to the suggested resolutions portion of our meeting tonight.
Forgot to unmute. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number one resolved that the claims for the warrant dated February twenty-second, 2022 totaling 364,492.69 warrant A thirteen general fund and $400 warrant sex, CS four, CS fund trust, trust fund be audited and approved. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two resolved that the reading of the minutes for the public sessions of February eighth and February tenth, 2022 shall be dispensed within those minutes shall be accepted by the village clerk and the actions taken at that meeting shall be ratified and approved. We have motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three resolved that the board of trustees accepts the resignation of Southampton Village Fire Department host company number one member, former chief Frederick Camp the second with fifty point eight-six years of service and is now exempt. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four resolved that the board of trustees accepts the resignation of Southampton Village Fire Department host company number one member, former captain, Richard Kaminsky with 51.69 years of service and he is now exempt. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number five resolved that the board of trustees of the incorporated village of Southampton hereby approves local law three dash two, 2022, the proposal to amend village code section one nineteen dash two fees and to update building department fees. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolve number, resolution number six resolved that the board of trustees authorized, authorizes the mayor to execute a one-year extension of the contract for the village to provide fire protection with the village Southampton Fire District for an annual fee of 1,240,206, which will expire on December thirty-first, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Quick discussion. I, I, I just one question. Are, are, are we still working on a more permanent, long-term? Or is it, are we just, where, where is SASS there? Are we, are we going to? Are, are we still in negotiations or what's the SASS there with them?
If I could answer that, the contract, the previous contract expired in the end of the last year and we've been operating sort of in a, without a contract. And so this gives us breathing space to negotiate a new, a new arrangement with a particular focus on how the district helps fund the village's purchase of new capital equipment, which is not specified clearly in the existing agreement. But we needed to establish this agreement just to give us breathing space to create, to negotiate the new agreement.
Thank you, Trustee Stevenson.
So I, I have a, a quick kind of discussion I wanted to kind of speak to the board about. So first, you know, I wanted to just preface by saying that it has been really a privilege and an honor to get to know, you know, many of the men and women of our Southampton Village Volunteer Fire Department. These are individuals who will show up at your home at two o'clock in the morning. They will put themselves in harm's way and I have a tremendous amount of respect for all the men and women of our fire department. And I applaud them for all of their service to the village. This is not a job for everybody, but this is for people who step up and, and again, put themselves in harm's way in order to help the community. So we are indebted to them and it is an honor to be able to work with them. And I've had, again, the honor or privilege to get to know some members of the fire department as well as our chiefs, particularly Chief, you know, Alfie Callahan and Manny and, and Polis and everybody. So it's been, been great. Now, I wanted to say that I'm, I'm okay extending this for, for one more year. But I would like to essentially make sure that we have an agreement that looks out for our Southampton Village Fire Department to make sure that they are appropriately compensated so that they have the best equipment and materials and resources that they need to run the best possible fire department, which we have a longstanding tradition. I also want to make sure it's fair to our residents and taxpayers. We're in budget season right now and we need a contract that appropriately compensates the village. And I also want to make sure that town residents, which this district covers that we service, which includes Chinookock, Tuckahoe, as well as parts of Watermill are also aware of what is going on. And my particular issue where we stand right now is that in the early to mid two thousands, there was this fire district that was created. For those in the public who are not aware, the fire district is a separate municipality. It has its own tax line and they levy a tax onto the district each year. And they collect approximately $2 million or so taxes every single year. But as, as you see from this resolution, the village is only getting 1.2 million or so dollars to service the fire department. Now, if you look at any analysis that we've done, it costs us much more than 1.2 million dollars to service the district. And we often do not get any contributions for equipment from the fire district. Now, I had a conversation with Chief Callahan before this meeting to let him know that I was going to say a few remarks so that there are no surprises on our volunteer fire department end. But I would like for this board to work together with the fire district and with our fire department to make sure that this contract appropriately compensates the village residents and taxpayers as well as puts together a mechanism for more funding for our fire department. Again, since I've been mayor, we've purchased two, or soon to be three fire trucks. We've purchased one for 1.2 million. We've purchased a smaller vehicle for upwards of $600,000 and we're going to be purchasing a new police fire truck for about $500,000. This is expensive equipment. We want the best of the best for our fire department, but we need a contract for the district, which we also, by the way, dispatch for, to again, represent an appropriate compensation amount. So we'll be working as a board to make sure that this is the right contract. But, but I can tell everybody now that for whatever reason, over the last 15 years, there wasn't a contract that was put in place that in my opinion appropriately compensates the fire department or the village. And so we've got a lot of hard work to do to make sure that we have a better contract moving forward. This is the first contract that this board, you know, will have to negotiate. It's why it's only one year. And we're going to have to, you know, work again, side by side with everyone to make sure that we have a better contract in place. Otherwise, the village will have to continue to subsidize the fire district and the residents of the fire district will be paying taxes that are not actually being used to pay for the services of the village. So with that being said, I'm not sure if there's any other comments, but that's those, those are the comments that I wanted to put on the, the record here tonight. And again, we, we want to make sure we work hand in hand with our outstanding members of our Southampton Village Fire Department to make sure we have the best possible contract. Okay. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution number seven resolved that the board of trustees accepts the fiscal year-end, May thirty-first, 2021 audited financial statements as submitted from the auditors, PFK O'Connor Davies LLP. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number eight, whereas the village has received county E nine one one funding in excess of the amount budgeted by over $20,000 and Acting Chief Hurtow has requested that $5,000 be appropriated for the purchase of equipment needed for the dispatch unit. Now therefore be it resolved. The board of trustees approves the attached budget amendment number two twenty-six, increasing police equipment A thirty-one twenty point two in the amount of $5,000 for the purchase of this equipment. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, whereas the state controllers office audited fellowship service credit award program for the Southampton Village Fire Department in 2016 and issued a report stating that they were not properly awarding service credits. And whereas this plan was never adopted by the board, yet the fire department was under the impression that the board formally adopted this policy and has been complying with the new service award program since 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees retroactively adopt this policy, which will then be submitted to the state controllers office as a matter of record effective January sixteenth, 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I'm just a small, a short discussion. We, I was actually on the state controllers website and I noticed that the village had been audited, their LoSAP award program had been audited for the purpose of determining if they were appropriately awarding service credits. And there was never a corrective action plan filed with the, the state controllers office. And I'll put further review. I did find that the fire department had taken corrective action, had implemented the updated policy and taken all the corrective measures that were recommended by the state controller and were under the impression that the village board had adopted the policy in 2018 when they enacted it. So as a formality, they had corrected, you know, almost immediately any of the issues that they had and they have been playing by the, by the state controllers office rulebook. And the board just needs to go through this process to formally adopt, ratify the policy that they've implemented. So any other, any questions?
Thank you, Charlene.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution number 10 resolved that the board of trustees approves Love Michael and US autism homes to hold the doggy dash for autism on Saturday, April second, 2022 from 10:30 AM to 2:30 PM with its start and finish at Agawam Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 11 resolved that the board of trustees hereby approved that with respect to the twenty-two village election and in accordance with village code chapter six dash one, the election will, will be held on Friday, Feb. Resolution number eleven resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approved that with respect to the twenty two village election, and in accordance with Village Code, chapter six dash one, the election will will be held on Friday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty two. The polling place will be located at the Levitas Center, Southampton Cultural Center, located at twenty five Pond Lane. The polls will open from the timeframe from nine a.m. to nine p.m. The following offices will be filled for justice village trustee. Two positions for the term of both positions is two years. Current incumbent Gina S. Arresta and current incumbent Joseph Armaglocklin is now amended to read, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves with respect to the twenty twenty two village general election. And in accordance with the Village General Code, the election shall be held Friday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty two. The polling place will be located at the Levitas Center, Southampton Cultural Center, at twenty five Pond Lane, Southampton, New York. Polls will be open from nine a.m. to nine p.m. The following offices will be filled for village trustee, two positions. The term of office for both positions is two years. Come current incumbent Gina Arresta and current incumbent Joseph McLaughlin. The following office will also be filled for justice village justice court, one position for the term of office is four years, and the current incumbent is Honorable Barbara Wilson. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Um, Mayor, we do have a supplemental resolution that has two that was provided to the board with two resolutions, and there is one additional request from trustee Robin Brown to add a third. So can I have a motion to add the supplemental agenda?
Motion to add the supplemental agenda?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
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 Any opposed? A resolution number one. A resolution one, whereas the village of Southampton has received an application submitted by Heart of the Hamptons to operate a food pantry at forty four Meeting House Lane, Southampton, New York, as a special exemption use. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby sets a public hearing for Tuesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two at five p.m. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two, whereas the village of Southampton has received a grievance by the P R O B A Radio Operators Union regarding holiday pay, uh, which was denied. And whereas Proba has appealed the denial to the village board citing Article Four of the collective bargaining agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees sets a grievance hearing for March tenth, twenty twenty two. The village determine, the village administrator will send a notice of of hearing to the P R O B A officials. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution number three.
Charlene, Charlene, I'm sorry to jump in. I just want to clarify, is that going to be at six p.m.?
Um, actually, it's, um, it it will be part of the meeting, yes.
Okay.
So I I believe that the the grievance, there isn't a notification in the contract that allows for appearance, and they have to give us ten days notice if they are going to appear. Otherwise, the board will be provided with summary, with summations of both sides of the grievance, and the board will make a determination and discuss at that meeting.
Fair enough. I ju- I just didn't know if it was a special meeting or if we're going to do it during the regular.
It's during the regular meeting, but the information, the information will be, you know, we'll know ahead of time, you know, we'll have all the the documents and information submitted to the board and in ahead, ahead of time, and they'll just discuss whatever their their decision will be.
Okay, thank you.
And March twenty ninth is not a regular scheduled meeting.
March twenty ninth is a special meeting, and that is for the vocal, for the the special.
Are you talking about LoSAP? I'm sorry. Okay, I mean, the Proba.
Proba is going to be during a regular board meeting, yes.
Right.
Yes. Um, all right, resolution number three, whereas since December twenty first, the village of Southampton has developed a partnership with We Connect the Dots, Upskill New York, Bonnie Cannon of B H R C, B H C C R C, and Jada Grant, a young professional sponsored by B H C C R C. And whereas Village Hall would like to continue to cultivate this initiative, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees appoints Jada Gant to the position of Office Assistant, part-time, at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars per hour, three days a week, effective February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Trustee, would you like to say anything about this program, since this was something that's near and dear to your heart?
Well, I I'm kind of excited about it, and I'm sure the mayor is as well, because he was very happy to hear that we would be partnering with this young lady, and she has shown herself, as I hear exemplary, and a credit to her program and an example to others. So we are quite excited as far as nurturing this and the benefits of what she's giving with her work for the village. So I think we all, as trustees, are grateful for being able to be part of this nurturing employment with her, and thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown.
Okay, so all in favor?
Bye.
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 Opposed? That concludes the resolution portion.
Okay, excellent. So we'll now move forward to comments from board members, and we'll open this up in alphabetical order with trustee Brown. I'm sorry, trustee Arresta. I was just thinking of trustee Brown.
Okay, thank you. I so I I really said that I wanted to say tonight, just give the update with the the bellies and uh, also the even charging stations and gets a couple of other things that Gary and I have cooking to keep our village beautiful and some plans for the spring, and I will keep everybody updated as that 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 got moved along. So just have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arresta. Next is trustee Brown.
I I think I've said it all, and wishing everyone a pleasant February. I hope sure they enjoy the Valentine's Day and their heart awareness month, and the village is all a glow in red in support of heart health, and thank everyone. Good evening.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a few quick things. Just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Kaminsky, Mr. Kim, for their years of service. Fifty years is a long time for to involve with any, any organization, especially a volunteer. So my, again, big thank you to them and their years of service, and I hope they enjoy their retirement. Um, also, I also wanted to, um, say, um, thank you to Yannan DPW, who is continually out there, salt in the roads, and because we've had some snow squalls the last few weeks, and I wanted this, in addition to the biggest problem, so they've done, they've done a great job out there, salt thing, and taking that roads as a, as they have been. So I was trying to mention those two quick things, and hopefully everyone has a good, uh, good week and see you next month.
Thank you, trustee McLaughlin, trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say how pleased I was to hear the auditor's report and the very positive statements they made regarding the the, not only the results, expenses below budget, revenue above budget, but also the the financial controls and the attention to detail and the management prowess that the village executed in achieving these results. And the few points that they raised of concern, it was also gratifying to hear the auditor say that, in their opinion, that we are already making progress in addressing those issues. Of course, it's the nature of the beast that when one year ends, the next year starts, and we're currently obviously at work in this coming year's budget. I have met, uh, along with, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, and and administrator Kegel Betts, uh, with the, uh, fire department, with the building department, and with the emergency services department. And I was just very impressed in those meetings with the grasp of detail, the attention to fiscal responsibility that all of the leaders of those departments, Alfie Callahan, Shane Fano Cario, and Tian Hoseo showed in the the crafting of their proposed budgets for the coming year. So I just want to say thanks to everybody who achieved those results and who hopefully will achieve these results going forward. I think the village is in good hands with their leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. And wanted to thank you as well for digging into the the numbers during the budget cycle, and I wanted to echo those comments. But first, wanted to thank our village administrator and treasurer, Charlene Kegel Betts, as well as Julie, uh, who's came on board here. And what we saw tonight was a result of a lot of hard work by our Board of Trustees, and particularly by our treasurer and accounting division, as well as our deputy treasurer. And this was essentially, all this work happened behind the scenes. When you think of what a Board of Trustees is responsible for, it's legislation, but also most importantly, managing the budget and the purse strings of the village. So this is not what appears, obviously, on the front page of the paper all the time, but it is what we'll be leaving future boards with by having this increased attention to detail, policies and procedures in place, and new orders amongst other initiatives that are taking place in order to strengthen the village's financial position. So again, wanted to thank everybody involved. Our thank our board, thank our treasury team, thank our auditors. Pleasure to hear that report, but of course, there's there's some more work to do. I just wanted to thank trustee Brown and, you know, membership and leadership of the Bridgehampton Child Care Center, as well as our clerk Kathy Sweeney, who's helped tremendously with this program to bring this to life, and it's a pleasure to work with, um, young professionals in order to bring them into public service and local government so that they can gain experience in the future and help bring that to other municipalities and other jobs down the road. So the thing that I wanted to, and then also wanted to recognize, we have the Love Michael event at Agawam Park, April second, two thousand and twenty two. Love Michael is an outstanding event that helps benefits individuals with various disabilities, and they do a lot of work, great work at the the Greek church. And it's been great to get to know some of the young people there, and we're happy to support the organization, and I would encourage everybody to attend. I was lucky enough to go through the drive-through parade last week. That was a great event, and our fire department, of course, was there helping that. Uh, the thing that I'll close with is that while we have some good news regarding the audit and our financials, we need to continue to work hard to make sure that we have a successful budget moving forward. As I mentioned in prior meetings, given various inflationary items, as well as the rising cost of health insurance, it's going to be harder and harder to provide tax cuts, property tax cuts to our village residents. There's a lot of things that I'm proud of, a lot of things that we're proud of. One of the things that I was most proud of just this past year is that this board helped us put together the first tax rate cut in twenty years and the first tax levy cut in any memory that anyone could possibly even record. Now, as I said, cutting the tax levies a once, once in a while type, type thing, we're going to have to work very, very hard if we would like to achieve a cut in the tax rate. I don't know if that's possible. Again, we had twenty years in a row where the village Board of Trustees increased the tax rate, but I would urge our Board of Trustees to help us make some of those hard decisions that are going to be necessary if we would like to deliver another reduction in the tax rate and assessed value to our village residents. I'm happy to go over those hard decisions. Again, they're called hard decisions because they're going to be, they're not going to be easy to make, and I can lay out what those are going to be. And I'd be happy to meet one-on-one with everybody to to discuss those further. But if we don't make those hard decisions, we will not be able to deliver this this reduction in in our property tax rate. We do have our public hearing, the first one coming up in March. We we can have others if needed. But, uh, on that topic, I also just wanted to thank our Budget and Finance Committee for their their hard work throughout the process and for each of our trustees for rolling up their sleeves and helping out with this budgetary process. So with that being said, I'll conclude my remarks, and I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting. So is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
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 We have a very quick, uh, do we have, I'm sorry, Mayor, do we have a exec session item, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, I I, Mayor and Charlene, I thought we had an exec session.
Yeah, we have, it's a very, it's a very brief one.
Concerning pending litigation.
Yes.
I'm not aware of any, any items in executive session. But really, it's up to the the board I about what they'd like to do. I know we just adjourned the meeting. Ken, is there?
Well, my my understanding was there was an executive session issue, and we have outside counsel on the line who is going to update you on some litigation issue. If you, if you don't want to do it for this meeting, we can do it for another meeting.
Really up to the board?
You have a hand up, Mayor Scott Creppen?
That's outside counsel.
It should be very brief. It should be very brief.
You're still streaming, so let me know what to do.
We would like to go forward into the executive session.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so you have to revoke the closing of the meeting and.
No, no, you're you're not, you don't close the meeting. What you're doing is making a motion to go into executive session, talk about pending litigation concerning the beat.
I mean, he closed the meeting, has to be reopened. Am I right? I guess not. I don't know.
Kat, you've you've seen quite a few meetings these days.
What's that?
I said Kat has seen quite a few meetings these days.
Yes, sir.
So I think you can just make a motion to to adjourn into exec session.
Are you making a motion?
If anyone would like to make that motion, I'm I'm comfortable.
Make the motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll second that.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All right, I'll make the motion to return, return to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
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 I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.